All right, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call today's November 1st meeting of the Missoula Board of County Commissioners to order. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if folks have not participated in it yet, today, the annual book sale at the, for the Historical Museum at Fort Missoula, opened this morning. I tried to go out there, but realized I forgot my checkbook. So I came back, and I'll have to go out there later. But take advantage of that, anyone who is watching on TV or in the room today. Any other announcements to be had?
Don't forget to vote on Tuesday.
Vote on Tuesday. Commissioner Curtis says, yes. Okay. Are there any public comments on items not on today's agenda? And we have a very slim agenda today with one item. No takers on that. Our current claims list, and this would be claims received as of October 17th through October 21st, 24th by the Commissioner's Office, total $3,783,083.80. We have one public hearing today, which I'll open, and then this is related to the Pearl Cash family transfer. And we will begin with a staff report by Lauren Miller.
Lauren Miller, Planner with Community and Planning Services. This request is from Pearl Cash to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to her husband. This property is located west of Nine Mile Road, north of Interstate I-90. The current lot is approximately 144 acres in size with an existing single-family residence on the property. The tract is unzoned and is located within the area of the 2002 Regional Land Use Guide with land use designations that follow the 1975 Comprehensive Plan. The plan designates this area as one dwelling unit per 40 acres. This request today does not exceed that density that's recommended. The proposed parcel configuration will result in two total tracts. Tract one, on the left-hand side there, to be transferred to the applicant's husband, will be a total of 40 acres in size and contain that existing single-family residence. Tract two will remain in ownership by Pearl Cash and will be a total of approximately 104 acres in size. The applicant has indicated that the primary purpose for this family transfer is to refinance a loan on the property for future estate planning purposes and that the tracts are to be used for residential and recreational purposes. The proposal was sent to county agencies for review. We received most comments of no concern for the proposal. This slide does show the FEMA-mapped floodplain on the property. The Missoula County Floodplain Administrator noted that subdivision exemptions along a parcel with Zone A floodplain, which is that blue you see on your screen. Designation does require a flood study to determine base flood elevation or a note on the Certificate of Survey stating that development may not occur on these tracts unless a flood analysis has determined that the location of the proposed development is outside of the flood hazard area. The rebuttable presumptions and general evasion criteria were reviewed in the staff analysis, and those that were triggered were noted in bold in the report. The rebuttable presumptions triggered by this proposal was if the landowner intends to divide land for the gift or sale to the landowner's spouse or minor children. The landowner does intend to transfer the parcel to their spouse, Robert Brew. Additionally, if the division appears to be made for the purpose of speculation by the landowner or for resale for the benefit of the landowner by using the grantee as a straw person, this may be indicated if the applicant or recipient own other tracts of land. The recipient, Robert Brew, is listed as property owner of three other tracts in Missoula County under his LLC Neighborhoods by Design. The general evasion criteria that were triggered was if the original tract was transferred to the claimant in the past two years. The tract was transferred to Pearl Cash in August of 2018. The second general evasion that was triggered was if the request exemption is unsuitable for the intended use or purpose of the division. The applicant has indicated, in a letter to the Missoula County Commissioners, that was in the application, that upon approval of the family transfer, that the 40-acre tract would be transferred to both the applicant and the recipient. And once the financing has been finalized on the property, that the tracts would be transferred back to the LLP. This would be contrary to Section 8.6.14.1D of Missoula County Subdivision Regulations, which states that the tracts created by this exemption may not be transferred or sold within two years of the date of county commissioner approval of the exemption unless otherwise approved through an appeals and exemptions process as outlined in Section 8.8.7. The family transfer also creates an additional tract of record when another exemption, such as a boundary line relocation, is an option and does not create an additional tract of record. The third general evasion criteria triggered would be if the division could be accomplished by a different exemption that would be more appropriate for the intended use. As I had stated, the application does indicate ownership of the parent tract is in two tracts of record, potentially allowing for a boundary line relocation exemption rather than a family transfer. There is a deed restriction on the smaller tract of record, which prohibits the construction of residential building. However, Community and Planning Services has not found evidence that the deed restriction would be affected by a boundary line relocation exemption. The deed restriction prohibits construction of a dwelling unit, but does not indicate that adjustment of a boundary line would be prohibited. Staff is recommending that the request by Pearl Cash to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to her husband, Robert Brew, to be denied. I have a few questions for the applicant, if they'd like to come forward.
Ms. Cash, do you want to come up? And if you could just make sure the green light on your microphone is on, just hit the button there. Perfect, thank you.
And if you just want to state your name for the record?
I'm Pearl Cash.
Did you buy the property with the intent of dividing it?
No.
Do you or your transferees intend to transfer the property within the next year?
No.
Have you talked to anyone in the county about going through subdivision review?
No.
Will the property be developed?
Never.
Will the recipient of the property be residing on the property?
The recipient, yes.
Okay. That concludes my questions.
Thank you. Mr. McCormick or Mr. Brew, do you want to address us?
Thank you, Commissioners. Alan McCormick, on behalf of Bob Brew and Pearl Cash, who are both here with me today. We understand this is unusual. You don't normally see family transfers being done this way. And I want to give you a little bit of the history. We've been upfront from the beginning of what we were trying to do here. And we've articulated that to the Planning Department. I know Ken Jenkins spoke with you on Monday about this. He couldn't be here today. But I've been assisting Bob and Pearl with this for much longer than that. We first wanted to do standard refinancing using a mortgage exemption. And unfortunately, the national underwriters of loans, meaning if you're not going to keep the loan with a local bank, if they're going to do the loan and then sell the loan, which most of them are done, the national underwriters are not accepting mortgage exemptions. They're afraid of it. It's a unique statute, doesn't exist anywhere else, and they don't want to try to understand it, and they're rejecting any loans using that form of security. I checked with one of my colleagues, who does some of the same stuff that I do, and he's known, he knows of one local bank that has agreed to do this kind of mortgage exemption. But I think as you and your folks who deal with the mortgage exemptions will tell you, you're not seeing hardly any of these anymore. They used to be pretty common, now they're virtually extinct. So given that the financing they want to go through, VA financing, given Bob's service history, the underwriters will not accept this. We looked for another alternative. That alternative would be potentially using a boundary line relocation, because there are two parcels here. That creates significant problems for us. There is a deed restriction on the parcel. But Bob and Pearl have a much greater interest with this property, and they want to put it into a conservation easement. And of course, you get benefits from conservation easements by giving up development rights. And one of the things that we're concerned about is that if we use that boundary line adjustment, does it extend the deed restriction out further to the rest of the property, such that it's effectively extending or removing development rights that complicates the use of this for purposes of putting up a conservation easement on the property? So that, that and other concerns that we have about doing the boundary line relocation with that deed restriction, kind of took that out of our hands as a way to create this parcel. So that was, left us with two options, going through the subdivision review process. And I think Ken quoted a price of 30 grand, 40, 40, somewhere in the $40,000 range to, from start to finish for one parcel. Subdivide one parcel that is never going to be developed, that is going to be used eventually for a conservation easement, and as part of the process here, that didn't make a whole lot of sense for us. So we looked with the last option, which is the family transfer exemption. And this meets the criteria. The family transfer exemption in statute says, unless you are evading the subdivision act, you get to transfer a piece of property to immediate family members. We could be standing in front of you, asking for three or four parcels, and just say we're going to hold on to those parcels and create them, and then you've got, instead of three parcels, one of which has a deed restriction on it, now we've got five parcels. And there's nothing that would require that to be turned down, because it wouldn't look unusual. And the only thing that's odd about this one is it looks unusual because of the reason why we're trying to do it this way. And so really, this is, this is the way that we saw that we could create the parcel that could then be the right size to use for the mortgage exemption, not for a mortgage exemption, but to use as security in place of the fact that we can't use the typical mortgage exemption process for it. So this became the way to do it, create one parcel, and then we'd like to have a waiver of the two-year holding period so that we can transfer it back into the LLP. As we took it out of the LLP to give to Pearl, so that Pearl could then do the family transfer to give the parcel to Bob, to create the parcel to use for security purposes, then we want to put it back in the LLP for estate planning purposes. And then, having done all of that, it will allow them to move forward on their conservation goals for the property. So we know this looks weird, we know it looks different, but it's not an evasion of the subdivision act. Nobody's trying to pull the wool over your eye to create a parcel that we're going to transfer to a developer next week and say, ha-ha, we schooled you on the, on the, trying to create a parcel. That's simply not what's happening here. So I understand why the Planning Department made the recommendation that they did, but we respectfully disagree and would ask that you approve this. And if you have any questions?
Thank you. Commissioner Curtis?
So, Mr. McCormick, Cola wasn't here on Monday to hear the explanation about why banks don't like these in Montana?
Yeah, I can give you that explanation. So the way the mortgage, you know, back in the day, which is, what would that be, 15 years ago? There was a, well, more recently than that even, but there was a significant difference of opinion around the state of whether the mortgage exemption statute automatically created a parcel, or whether it only created a parcel in the event of foreclosure. And Missoula County was one of the counties where there's a window of about two years where you had the interpretation that it did in fact create a separate parcel. So when you, when you're going back looking through your records, if you're in that two year window, I think the county has recognized those as separate parcels, and if you're not, the county has said, those aren't separate parcels. And various counties handled that differently across the state. And because of that difference of opinion, the legislature decided to fix that and change the statute, so it's very clear in the statute that using that exemption does not create a parcel unless and until it's foreclosed upon. So the first thing that the national underwriters do is they say, well, we can't do it, they all want to do a trust indenture, because Montana trust indentures are better than mortgages. They allow for a power of sale, meaning that in the event of a default, you can sell that parcel on the courthouse steps without having to go through a judicial foreclosure. You don't have to file suit and serve and get everybody into court. You just have that power in a Montana trust indenture already built in. And so most underwriters, including local banks, want to use trust indentures. That's why, if you ever look at the green sheets, there's a huge chunk of mortgage, or trust indentures supplied every week, and very few mortgages used. And so the mortgage exemption, not mortgage exemption, trust indentures are limited to 40 acres in size. And so in this case, they don't have a parcel that's 40 acres in size. They have a parcel that's 100, 165 acres in size. So we needed to figure out, how do we create a parcel that's 40 acres in size to do this? Because the national underwriter, if we use a mortgage exemption, we can draw that same line on the plat, and it shows a, sort of a dashed line, 40 acres, that theoretically exists. By statute, it doesn't exist unless and until foreclosure happens. And the underwriters are afraid of that. They'll ask us, have you ever seen one of those parcels spring into being? And, and we haven't, because nobody does these anymore. And so what they're worried about is they're saying, okay, you're telling me, I have now have a trust indenture as security on a parcel that doesn't exist, that will only exist if we foreclose, and you don't know what the document is that you filed to create that parcel when the foreclosure happens. Yes, that's what I'm telling you. And so they say, absolutely not, we won't do it. And we had that confirmed with our local bank, that's, that's been processing all of this. And so that's the issue that we're running into, is they're afraid, because the parcels don't exist until foreclosure, and then nobody's quite sure how you create them once the foreclosure happens. So how do I sell, how do I exercise my power of sale in the trust indenture on the courthouse steps, when I don't know if the parcel exists or not? That's, I don't know if that's the explanation Ken gave, but it's the one I've got.
You gave more detail. I have a couple more.
Sure, go ahead.
So you talked a little bit about the survey costs, and again, that's because the 40-acre parcel can be described as an eloquent part, and so you don't have to survey, you can describe.
Correct.
But we did ask on Monday, and Tim may need to weigh in on this too, how about the remainder? Does it need to be, because it's not an eloquent part exactly, it has some funny shapes? Can the remain, does the remainder need to be surveyed?
It should not, would be my...
Tim, would you like to come up and...
It should be, now have a legal description of whatever the original was, less than and accepting therefrom, that portion. That's what the Highway Department loves to do to us. So the Frenchtown Frontage Road, now all of the deeds along that entire corridor, now say the deed is X, like Parcel A of Certificate of Survey 5309, less than and accepting therefrom the portion taken by the Highway Department and some other deed, because they don't, they unfortunately won't resurvey the parcels once they take your land.
Tim, would you like to come up and address that?
Both the Surveyor's Office and Clerk and Recorder's Office confirmed that that remaining piece can be described as, maybe not an eloquent part, but it's basically the legal description you see in Lauren's staff report, minus the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter, or something of that nature.
Okay, thanks. You have another question, Jean?
Let's see. I do have one, I guess it would be for either Alan or Pearl, but in the application, it says that you plan to transfer it back, as you just described, and yet Pearl's answer was no. So I think it's because it's not to someone other than...
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. I don't, I don't think we had reminded Pearl that was part of the plan.
Okay.
And, and yes, and technically Pearl would still own it, she just owned it as being a partner of the LLP rather than individually.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Cola?
Sorry, I have post-Halloween, late night with kids' brain, but it seems to be there's a disagreement over whether a boundary line relocation would be appropriate and helpful. And I understand there's a deed restriction, but how would, how would that, if maybe you could explain to me how that deed restriction would affect the conservation easement in the future, and why that's a problem?
Part of it's that it's unclear.
And this is Alan McCormick at the mic.
It's unclear to us, the effect of it, but it's got a, it's, when you think about like covenants on a piece of property, if the piece of property is 10 acres and the covenants are on it, and you take a boundary line adjustment and move that 10-acre lot and make it 15 acres, do the new five acres you added to it, are those also subject to the covenants? And so there's a concern about that, but in terms of when you do a conservation easement, you get value for the development rights that you give up. And so if that deed restriction, then if you move the boundary, and the deed restriction is suddenly, instead of on 10 acres, it's on 140 acres, and it's prohibiting any development, you've given up all your development rights without getting the benefit of putting the conservation.
Okay. I was seeing them working together, since the deed restriction is about no development, and really so is a conservation easement, but it's that then, when you calculate the value of the conservation easement, if there's already a deed restriction, that subtracts from the value.
Correct.
Gotcha.
Right, you're giving up, you have to demonstrate to the IRS that you have a certain amount of development ability, and if there's, if that's complicated by the fact that you've got this deed restriction, saying no residential structures out there, then it's going to turn that process into a much more complicated process.
Tim, you want to give us your take on that?
Yeah, it was our opinion that the deed restriction only applies to the legal that speaks to it, that portion of the property. We do see the issue of, and this is maybe another issue that hasn't been brought up, the cost of surveying if there is a boundary line relocation, because that kind of panhandle in the northeast corner there would have to be surveyed, so that would be an additional cost for consideration, should there be a boundary line relocation.
Okay, so I guess, Mr. McCormick, or, or Tim, or Lauren for that matter, how, how do you recommend that we would navigate the, what is currently established as an appeals and exemptions process, to deal with the fact that you want to transfer this back to the LLP less, within the two-year timeframe? Just paint a picture for us, how process-wise you would propose that transaction to occur?
I don't know.
Okay. Mr. Worley, do you want to take a stab at it?
Has that answer?
Yeah, because it seems like we would be...
I think we would want to set up a separate meeting for that, a separate Thursday meeting, just for the sake of the record, and just to make sure the public could participate. And if you go through Section 511 in the subdivision regulations, there's some checkoffs that you have to make if you're going through an appeal. So I think we probably should just schedule that, and I don't know that we have to schedule it today, should you approve the family transfer, but I think it probably should be a subsequent meeting.
Right, I guess, and I alluded to this a little when we met earlier in the week to discuss this, is, is it, certainly the portrayal of how this will unfold is, or includes the fact that the intent is to transfer this back, and that this is not what we're creating here today, and the ownership by Mr. Brew would not be in perpetuity, but there's an intent to transfer this back after the, the refinancing has occurred. But is there any way to condition today's action in a way that would ensure that that occurs? But how could we do that without having taken the step of going through an appeals and exemptions process? Jean, did you have a thought?
I think it would be triggered or caught when, when they tried to record it, right? So I mean, I think there's some safeguards in place. We know what their intention is, but I think that there are safeguards in place, doesn't, if they went to record it back in somebody's name within that two years, they would get triggered for calling your office, I would think, would it, Tim?
Yeah, Clerk and Recorder's Office keeps an eye on these, so I think we would have to go through the appeals process previous to make sure that that would happen. I don't know, Lauren, if you have any thoughts on that as well?
Yeah, I would agree with that, yeah.
So therefore, if we have this additional meeting at some point in the future, then we'd have an additional letter, a piece of paper to go with it, so that Clerk and Recorders could accept it.
Yeah, I think it would be better for the overall record to have something, yeah.
And that'd be my point, is to have a separate, independent process and a separate record, where the applicant has their showing of good cause for asking to be exempted from the two-year holding period, and then you just have all of that in one precise package.
I do have one question for Lauren.
Sure, go ahead.
So Lauren, could you pull back up the map that has the floodplain on it? So of course, we have these in our packet, and I pulled them out, and it seems like there's a little teeny corner of this newly created lot that is actually in the blue. So it seems like the language that Todd wants on the plat is kind of overkill?
Yeah, so, you know, and that would only be if additional development were to occur on the property itself. And obviously, since there's not going to be a Certificate of Survey recorded with the property, since they're exempt from the survey requirements, I'd kind of have to think through how that would be, if there'd be a restriction on the deed maybe regarding floodplain, or I'm not quite sure how that would look for, for floodplain purposes, since there's not going to be a required survey. I don't know, Tim, if you have thoughts on that?
Yeah, the regulations provide for a notarized statement in lieu of a survey, so there doesn't have to be a survey at that point, just a, basically a piece of paper that travels with the land, that says that if there's any future development, a flood study would have to occur.
And that's because this floodplain, while it's on a map, is not a FEMA-mapped?
Well, it's a FEMA-mapped floodplain, but elevations are undetermined at this point.
Okay. So while that would be there, since they don't plan for any other development, it probably won't trigger anything? It's still, it just seems like...
Right, it's just going to be, it would be a note, is all.
Traveling with the...
Right, a notarized document that would travel with the property.
Okay. Cola, did you have a question?
I was just wondering if John has any legal heartburn with the creative solution to using a family transfer exemption, sort of in lieu of a mortgage exemption, or boundary line relocation for the purposes of market forces demanding things that our current, very old statutes didn't contemplate?
No, I don't have any heartburn, Commissioner, and I appreciate the staff's perspective and the recommendation, and their diligence in following the review criteria. I did try, I did spend some time at the last second, late this morning, trying to figure out another way to skin the cat, because as I read the applicant's letter, it didn't seem to me like they really wanted to divide this land, that all they wanted to do is figure out a way to use some of it as security for a loan. And so I started toying with the idea of conditioning the family transfer on a future aggregation. And I came up with a somewhat complicated scheme about how that would work. Would probably be a process that couldn't be perfected for 20 years. It would involve an escrow, deeds and certificates of survey and escrow, and for a lot of reasons, that's, that's probably not a process that we, or a creative solution that we want to come up with here. Especially given the candid presentation of the applicant today.
Thank you. And, Mr. McCormick, I'm assuming that this proposal that's before us would not create problems for the lending institution in terms of the transferring of property at a future date after the tract is created?
By process, you're referring to us coming back and asking for...
Correct.
...an exemption from it? I don't think so, as long as we can come back before you relatively soon to do that. I actually, we've asked for the waiver mainly on Ken's advice, because it's my opinion that because this is being transferred from the, it'll be transferred to Bob, and then Bob would transfer it into the LLP, of which he's a partner, it actually doesn't violate your two-year holding period, because Pearl then gets added as a partner, and they're both partners of the LLP, so it's still under the control of the same person that is being transferred the property. So I'm, I'm not convinced it triggers it. So we asked for the waiver, just as, again, as part of being upfront and candid about what we're trying to do here, and Ken suggested that we ask for that. It's my opinion that it's not actually required, but again, that made it, it makes it all look a little different again, so I guess we're asking for it, even though my opinion is it's not triggered. But if, if everybody feels better that I come back in and provide that explanation in a separate hearing... and provide that explanation at a separate hearing, that's fine, too.
Commissioner Rowley?
I was actually wondering about that myself, because we do allow, when people want to transfer it, not transfer it, but change ownership or alter it slightly, like adding, if they're married or they're deceased and the property passes, we have said that we're okay with that. And it's really the intent that they can't sell it, and that it's okay to, to add your spouse or change, you know? And so I, I don't think we necessarily talk specifically about LLPs and LLCs or anything, though. So, I am wondering kind of if John has a thought on, if they're still the owners, do we have, does that violate the two-year holding?
I, I don't, I don't understand. I mean, I'm hearing that the only two partners in Wildrose LLP are Pearl and Robert, but I don't know that to be the case. I don't necessarily understand how that LLP is set up. And I also think that the, that there does need to be a separate record of the request to be exempted from that two-year holding period. And, you know, just personally, I don't, I, I would want some information on the record about why the, for estate planning purposes or for other legal purposes, why the property needs to go back into the LLP. I just think that's important for the public and for the public record. And I think we can do that relatively soon. And I think that the applicants can go forward with the financing that they need to in the interim.
Okay.
Any other questions, or discussion, or motion?
Well, I first appreciate that staff gave this a thorough look. And I appreciate the recommendation based on the complications here. I also appreciate that the, that the family has been very candid. They're not trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes about what their intentions are. And I believe that even if we come back with the exemption, or the waiver to allow them to transfer it back to the LLC, it still benefits the recipient in the end, which is our goal. So, I would move that, that we approve the request by Pearl Cash to utilize the family transfer exemption to create and transfer one parcel to her husband, Robert Brew, as presented in the application.
Second?
It's been moved in second, and it does not look like, this is a public hearing, which I never closed, but is there any public comment, even though there's no public here? Nope, it does not look like it. Mr. Brew, nothing you want to add at this juncture? Okay, consider the public hearing closed. All in favor? Aye. Okay, thank you. Yes, I was already adjourned in my own mind. Is there any other business to come before the commission today? Seeing none, we will be adjourned.